Pain in the ass. You know what? You're a real fucking pain in the ass.
Oh, this is, is this the same one as we're?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, but then I don't have.
Oh.
No, that's. All right, okay.
Okay.
I couldn't open it at my house.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, it's 7:32. And first on our agenda is the continuation of the public hearing with the town of Washington, 11th School Street, special permit for a two pickleball courts. I'd like to welcome Mitchell Solomon, newly appointed member, and he was at the last session of the public hearing, so he is prepared. So since the last meeting, we did request from the town and did receive an acoustics report that was specific to the site, extremely detailed. As far as I could gather from reading it, they did not recommend walls or masking the sound, but did recommend rotating the direction of the courts and using quieter equipment. And so I guess my first question to the applicant is why did you not incorporate that mitigation? Why didn't you not revise your application to include those recommendations? Okay, then, really, you'll have to request a continuation of the public hearing because we're at our limit right now and we would not, if we close it tonight, we won't be able to accept any new information.
So that was, when you had sent that to us, we were waiting on time to do that. So I know Jim waiting to hear from them to send it. I don't know how long it will take other than that.
Except for that, it's not unusual.
Yeah.
We often have to wait for engineers, but if you could just please request your, put your request in writing for an extension of the public hearing, because we're only allowed to hold it open for 35 days without your permission to extend it.
Do you want to ask me the other questions as well, or are we?
Well, can you tell us exactly what mitigation measures you requested?
The only presentation of support, and that was really the only recommendation that would make a significant difference other than the equipment, that is the recommendation. So we certainly, we talked about putting signage up with a QR code, letting people know that they could use the QR code to find out what kind of paddles involved that we recommend to use for the thumb courts. We know we can't lose that, but we certainly can make sure that maybe the supply can carry it. That was the conversation that I was going to have with them, so we would do that. And then the, a question about the bathrooms, our bathrooms now we're in the 21st century, so they're automatically turning on at 5:30 in the morning and they automatically light. So we can hire somebody to police and open up the middle court, but we would put signage up to say that, you know, you could start at 8:00 AM until dusk. And again, not policing it, but certainly those are our recommendations for the night.
Will you, will this be open, anybody can use it at any time? Or would you have a sign up, some kind of call into the parking rec, license and sign up?
Initially, we would just, whoever wants to come, I mean, I think you can't plan that. I know that there are apps that we use for other courts. We'll certainly look into that once it gets busy, but I think initially we'll just allow people to play. I took pictures of different signages and different pickleball court areas that I played in. So we have, you know, some play in the beginning, but I think once it picks up, then I know it will. The team app is pretty popular and then you can sign up for it.
Now, I never would have thought of this myself, but Jim brought it up at the last session. Has there been any discussion with school officials, what steps might be taken if noise from the courts would interfere with the school?
We, I know that Jim has already spoken to Cardinal here, and that was originally when the pickleball courts were going to be next to the tennis courts. We moved them purposely away from the school over by the other side so it wouldn't interfere with schools. So we don't have any special agreements with the basketball court that's actually parked in rest on the actual school playground, so we wouldn't see any special agreement with them either anymore than we did baseball games or thirty best of millions, which is right there.
Just to ask me, because I don't know, the basketball court is so close to the school. Is that open all during the day?
Not allowed to be open during the school because it is so far, but you know.
So that's the difference between the pickleball court and the.
There's a special agreement, and that's on, that's on the playground, whereas the pickleball court is over on the other side. But there would be no need for that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you certainly may.
So Cardinal is going to give you a new site plan?
Same thing again.
Is Cardinal going to deliver a new site?
Yeah, we're leaving, that's what we're moving.
With the same.
Rotation. And is there going to be other or can be impact on other sports, because everything is so tight?
It's not tight at all. There's so much open space that it won't impact anything. I know that the baseball fields have been, all of the people on the baseball association have all been in communication with Jim, and so, and they, and actually CJ, who is part of, a large part of our, should play baseball at the varsity level and the town level, perfectly fine regardless.
Okay, so no impact on any other sports?
No.
With the rotation?
No.
But it will, we will be able to see that site plan?
We would have to do in order for.
I mean, that's perfect.
I mean, that's a whole point of that. Is that the baseball people approving area? Is that like written down or is that just verbal? No, I mean, CJ is our chairman of the parks and rest, so, I mean, I mean, he's not here right now because he's got a lot going, but he obviously is supportive of it, and he was out there flagging his stakes along with our engineer, and he met myself, CJ did, with myself and Jim Marshall, which is time. Or even Mr. Workover, if you remember that. Yeah, Mr. Workover, he's on board. And even Scott Workover has looked at the area, I think, and even Kevin Johnson, so there's been no issue.
Bill and Mitchell, do you have any questions?
No. So I'm going to write a letter for continuing, and that will ask for them to move on for the next meeting to be able to make sure, and even before that, then we'll be able to, and there'll be nothing else that we'll need, we'll need from us other than site plan with the road commission, is that right?
Well, we'll see as the hearing progresses.
So it's June 23rd.
June 23rd. Now, have you considered the possibility of, in addition to putting up a sign recommending the quieter equipment, of actually providing some samples right there?
No, because it's just going to get picked up and stolen, and then it becomes more work than anything else. So just like.
We do the botching.
Yeah, so we'll just have a QR code, and you can just see what this equipment is. And famously, when you're playing tennis, you know, you bring your own equipment. It's not our responsibility to make sure that we supply that.
Okay, so today I received a supplemental statement from the adjoining property owners, which, you know, I've had time to skim, but would you like to? It's, yeah.
I was surprised we didn't get the town to report until last Tuesday. You know, we didn't see him, I think, before the end, that wasn't provided either by the town or the office, which I guess we have an opportunity for a side discussion of procedures. So I was going to beg the commission for continuance, and now that's not necessary. But we do plan to have this expert, football expert grant with the grants for us feel like a response. And I even had here tonight a bunch of critiques that I was able to pull together, but we'll all fire on that and do that next month at all, sort of together as we agree to call. Thank you for your attention tonight, and now you need to discuss something else later.
Well, I, I need more time to review and study it, but if you'd like to address it now, here's your opportunity.
All of this came to a, I know I'm not as long. You had a pension question. All right. So following the Washington club application for the courts on the, which, well, I learned of all the history that you chair Hill, you know, presented at a series of meetings, and that points the basis for the supplemental statement that A, as of 2002, sports facilities are not permitted in R1 and 411 School Street, where the school is in argument. Question is, is this a sports facility? We'll hold that for now. We got this thinking. Second issue, the fallback issue, which you Chair Hill and others started to eliminate about on Washington, above this tennis be justified as a sports sport, accessory to something else. And Chair Hill, the review of the history brings out some statements by the chair, former chair of the commission, and by attorney Zister, to the effect that in R1, it should be, must be accessory to a residence. And I think that sports facility, you never get to that second set of questions. Of course, there's no residents or foreign, there's pavilion, they live there, and there's a school, but courts are not designed for K through five school, we're going for outside. So it's not going to be a school facility. Anyway, that's for the next, the next month, unless you will. Ask follow-up question.
Yes, Bella.
Well, I'm curious about the R1 designation when you're talking about the town of Washington. And I've tried to find it, and I need someone to direct me where in zoning, town facilities, town land. It is.
4.4.9.
4.4.9. So we call town. So we call town and owned property.
Those are already, they're not gonna be.
I'm sorry, four point, four point nine?
Yes.
That's the section that is listed on the, um, on the special permit request, on the application. It's four point, four point nine. And I was.
I was directed by this, but to, um, advise the, the town. That that would be what would, that's what this would be under it, because it's a facility of the town.
You said we were saying something about it, but not for the kindergarten, so that's what he was saying? But actually, I would imagine actually the, um, for gym class or community, they would absolutely use the pickleball court, just like they use the tennis courts, just like they also use the basketball court. Um, they use it for field day, they use it for, um, uh, PE. So it would certainly be the same for the kindergarten, the grade as well.
That's the question. My point is not that gate and fly can, that it's not being gate and fly, it's not gate and follow the bar. Anyway, can I express about that? I know, I know when you're, you know. I know when you briefly addressed the notion of especially to a former resident. But, but what the Senator was saying in four, four, um, this is a youth permit by second amendment. And four, four, nine basically says building uses and facilities of town of Washington. And four, four, ten says schools, right, are, are committed in a resident position, not on the. So does it need to be an accessory? I mean, put aside the fact that four point three point five is not referred an accessory. I know Ziska, attorney Ziska dealt with that and has been receiving the Senator. But to the extent that we're not asking for residents or form, can it not also be an accessory use for town of Washington facility or for a school? In other words, why, why is that even relevant? Why is attorney Ziska's argument, does it need to be a accessory use of a form or residency even though? Well, that's, I'm sorry, that's the history that's been created. Right, but the important, but on the schooling. Uh, the only person in the room who I think may have knowledge of the Gunnery's football fields on South Street is Chair Hill. And he solved search, I just looked at minutes today.
Hmm.
And, oh, for the Gunnery fields and for the Runzy Ball fields, Spanish, a condition was set in the approvals, that use was to be limited to students at the school. And opposing teams, it's called that. Practices, experiences, and interacting games. So, uh, I don't wanna trigger anyone's bad memories, but you know what happened in that proceeding, Superior Court, et cetera. It was clear from those two bases, starting by Runzy Ball, Gunnery, that an accessory used to the school had to be in the student's group. And I mean, it raises the whole question. What about, what about the basketball court to the primary school? Why, in the context of those can be used by the primary? Well. So can the basketball? Uh, I don't know the history of what ended up where. Right. But there were a lot of pre-zoning facilities that were put in there that are not informed meeting. And from the aerial photograph I submitted to the state with the appeal stuff, there were two tennis courts even in 1934 or '55. Whenever it was, remember it was the high school in 1972, so it's not surprising. Anyway, uh, I think that another, whole other issue, not for you to put out, is overuse, too horned, way too much. And, yeah. I, I don't, I, I don't, I just wanna, I would like it if you, if you don't mind, although I go left, Mark, to address the notion of accessory use, not only the school, but the accessory use of a building facility of town of Washington. Right, because I don't, I don't how, I don't understand your argument about accessory use relating to previous history as relates to Washington club, I don't understand that. And I, I, I don't, I just don't understand the argument. So I, I don't, I, you could address it in the next, in, in something else you write down, it'd be helpful.
At least in addition?
Well, I think if you delve into exhibits, I don't know if I'm gonna do that. We'll see the history that Chair Hill laid out. And it's not, we just imagined. The history that Chair Hill laid out for the school or the town of Washington.
It's the previous legal incident.
This, this. Where the pickleball for the, for the Washington. It has the practice.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's different. That's a private club, that's nothing to do with the school, it's nothing to do with the town of Washington facility.
To go back to your first question, and the town of Washington get permission to do anything with parks in R1? Can it install a garage, a new one, can it install a junkyard, and install, install? We don't. I think it's, it's an accessory use where the kids can use the facilities and the sports facilities, honestly, why not? If the, if the kids in the, in the primary school have the ability to use a sports facility, well, I'll, forget the question, it's not. Forget to use two courts, two tennis courts, two basketball courts. I don't understand how the argument legally flies in the context of why pickleball are different. Forget about the other ones, I understand all that. I just don't understand the legal argument that basically says that somehow this, it's, it's, it's a cesser, it needs to be an accessory use for residents or form, and because it's not a residence in form, somehow this fair. And I, I don't see that. I don't think it's relevant. I don't think what attorney Ziska wrote in his letter is relevant to your case. That's my.
Well, Mitchell, and my point is, is that.
I mean, it's a product. That's not what the special.
Yes, or, or, you've been able to find to that, so I'm not sure why, why, why do I need to do the name? Well, and then what if they're not? Okay, I'm done. My point, further discussion, we have to just.
I would also recommend that, uh, when your reports are, uh, whatever sound reports you get, that it is like specific. Because otherwise, it's, it's not.
Probably.
Maybe.
Uh, I guess we go back to the point, if, and the town, plus the town of Washington have the authority to pull the structure, perform a use in R1, no other resident can perform it. I don't think so. And I think the, uh. Well, I don't, I don't think that's. The general principle that the rights of the town don't lies any higher than.
Just to make a quick comment on that.
Yes.
We have three applications, one of which was denied to Congress. All having to do with tennis slash pickleball. And of course, we haven't heard the, the, the argument yet, but, I'm not familiar with that. But eventually, we're gonna have to address this in a general way. And hopefully, that general way will pit one entity against the other. Because if we find yes for one, because of R1, then there's a possibility we'll find, perhaps unjustly, uh, deny for another entity in a.
So we just need to look at this in a.
Perhaps, or perhaps not, because they're applied under different section of the regulations.
Applications are being applied for under different.
Three different sections. Um, they, they.
Four nine, four point three three, and then.
I don't know.
Seventeen point.
Seventeen point ten. Oh man, so we really need to get our act together to address this in a uniform and fair way.
True, that's true, but I'm not sure they're not, I think there's a difference.
I think they're all different.
Yeah, yeah.
Different. The watching, yeah, how they come out. What the watching club is asking for in the context of, you know, a true facility, you know, ten courts, but it's more like commercial than, than just a couple courts. You know, it's a different, they're under different sections, but for you, I'm not sure. Accessory use is the main thing. I'm not sure.
Well, I need to study seventeen point ten on the surface. It looks like, as someone else said, loophole, that maybe Washington club could look at, or maybe not. I'm just saying, uniform discussion with three different entities.
Each one is worthwhile. I mean, we're talking about exercise for an aging population. Some of us are.
You know, age, some just better than others.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Yes, but would you give your name for the, uh, minutes? Announce.
And while the new silver. Um, and I, my question is, I think another one, I mean, I think I always think of the, the. But it needs to me that the, um, when the applicant is found, that that should, doesn't meet logical, that that's the same as when the applicant is a private organization, private person. It would seem to me, it's relevant that the town is a collective entity, and the quest, part of the issue should be whether it serves a function for the town. Uh, I, I mean, I understand that zoning is based on regulations and law, but it seems to me it also should consider the collective good. And it seems to me that this is very much in, in the collective good because it's, it's a way of, I think, integrating, in my own personal experience as well as my professional experience. It's a way of integrating different parts of this town that really have never been integrated before. You know, people play pickle and they come from different parts of the town. They come from affordable housing, and they have houses that are worth three million dollars. And they play pickle together, and they don't know how much they're having, how. And they talk to each other, they help each other, they get to know each other in a way that it seems to me is a collective good. And that that should have some weight to it.
Well, to your discussion, so far, I have to really.
Excuse me, but they, we have the plan of conservation and development. And wouldn't you say that that's one of the elements addressed in the plan of conservation and development? Uh, developing, um, activities and facilities for our aging population? So we don't have a combined plan of zoning permission. Um, so that would be a separate meeting. Um, but that's what we're, you know, wrapping up right now, is a revision of the plan of conservation and development. And basically, zoning is supposed to consider the plan of conservation development when they make.
I just wanted to speak to this, just that made me think. When you first started doing the pickleball, indoor pickleball at the Washington primary school, it was really fascinating to me because, um, reverends. Right, there was a lot of pickleball that didn't get, didn't know each other, and we were all playing, and they were different ages. Um, you know, from forties to fifties, sixties, seventies, and eighties. And the really funny thing to me was that my son actually came down, he was nineteen out. And then he started to play. And then he was playing with, uh, a team that had a seventy year old, eighteen year old, and fifty year old. And then two little boys came in from the baseball field who were in fifth grade and said, this is Cody, can we get into? So it was really for me, kind of this eye opening experience, and age was, was not the issue. It was about just doing something with the community. And then, and the fifth grade boy wanted to play with everybody else, and then my nineteen year old sent him in. To me, that is really the sense of a whole community doing something together. If I can promise you, they're not doing that, but, not, that's just not happening. But I do think it's a great opportunity to build a whole community around an activity. And I just think, to me, I love that, so thank you for sharing. I don't know if you do this, I don't know if you.
You getting any, your name and your address?
Or.
It is like a tent, you usually go with your four players or your two players, and that's you. Pickleball is whoever shows up, like, if there's just a single person and we wanna go play, we can find a, okay, that's what goes back for four, there's, you're selling these players. So that's how probably you need to play, you know, you don't do it with four, or the reserve of course, just for you in that time. Some people do do that, but most of the times, because all open play, whoever shows up plays. You know, all the models, all the. Yeah. Did I just answer that? It should, that, uh, pickleball has quite the different culture to open. Uh, tennis, you, you, you can be, you have people that you play with and you play with those people. Uh, but pickleball is quite the opposite, it's a very cohesive, often, uh, by its nature. And so by its nature, it becomes a place where people can meet new people, different ages, different social classes, backgrounds, and, and reintegrated and accepted in that group. It seems to me it's just the sort of thing we would want in town. And, and you see it in so many different towns, and it's kind of embarrassing, so we don't drive it. You go to Brookfield, and you get on a, on the court with people who are, you know, with kids. Man, yesterday, a man showed up with three of his daughters, and he was totally, they walked in and were totally integrated in what had previously been a game of women from between sixty and eight. In a residential, Brookfield? I was yes, and. Is it located in a residential or in a big complex? It's, it's not in a residential. It was, it's not attached to the school, but it is an open air and not that dissimilar, I mean, it's big. But you send us here in town, what's your word that the location isn't in that complex there, Brookfield?
It's kind of, it's, it's, we're not, well, we didn't, but it's, it's. Yeah, that is, that is, I don't know what, what we're gonna tell you. But, but what I know is that you could, I could go to Brookfield, anybody sitting in the room, and go there, and as soon as you show up at the court, you're accepted into the game. That is something that seems to me, that it's a great social value. And, and that social value ought to be, it seems to me, consideration that, that we all take, you know, that we all weigh.
Well, social value is written into the plan of conservation and development. I'm not sure it's written into the, the zoning regulations, but we will have time now to check the plan of conservation and development before the next meeting. Um, yes, attorney?
I'm making sure everyone, we're not trying to ban pickleball. I just think there, there are lots of areas in town that are used or sports facilities that are permitted. Lots of it here, and lots of other stuff, we have to go last year. And, uh, anyway, no one is disputing the values of exercise, socializing.
Did I just answer that? I mean, I think that that, the, the primary school and the area around the primary school is a place that family, the families, the kids.
Your recreation and, and that's where families go. You can go there and have your kids in the playground while you're hitting balls, while you're playing basketball, or you're playing tennis. That's the beauty of it, okay? That families go there. And it seems to me that pickleball would be a great addition to that combination, who bought with the county.
I, I don't think that's the point they're trying to make, if, if.
That it was a separate facility.
You're on Old Litchfield Road, what if it was across the street from you from seven thirty in the morning to, you'd be fine.
If it's a recreational center and that's where you live.
I'm just saying, their point is.
You understand, but it's been there for a very long time.
You understand.
If I bought my house.
This is.
Yes, I miss. I would understand that people are gonna come to the, use those facilities. It's part of what you buy, you buy your house, you know that. And it seems to me that you've also done research into the sound issue. I understand the sound issue, but it seems that that has been resolved. So I just think when we balance the in, the interest of various groups, that the town interest, the collective interest, should be weighed. that the town interest, the collective interest, should be weighed, right?
Especially after the survey report.
Um, missing the pink blouse.
Michael?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think anybody's at all saying there's any issue with it. I think it's really about the sound, so I think everything should be focused on that. I think the sound study Brown put in came to, came to a conclusion. They're going to bring, they're, I'm going to bring another one, and that's going to, that's going to be sorted out. So I think the argument is, seems to me like a little waste of time, we're all on the same side on that. And I would say that, I mean, I don't want to say the pickleball, but I think if everybody can be convinced that it's not going to disrupt and that the sound study worth that, then I think everyone would be happy. Obviously, there's going to be some, I'll be there, but I think that probably should be really focused on.
The sound study that the town, they were, it does support the fact that, so, I mean, we, and then we can, we can have maybe fourteen reports that come to try to argue that, but I just want to say that we request, you request us to do that. And that's what we did. And it's a, and it's of, like you said, a very thorough report. So I don't know how many more, um, articles of evidence we would need to be able to prove if, if all of a sudden our report is null and void.
Okay.
So they said all of your ones.
All of them, they, they were very...
Okay, this, no, no discussing back and forth. Have your, make your comments to the commission and, um, yes, in the pink blouse.
I believe my, there is no issue except for the sound. The sound is totally enough. Um, I know from my sister's, um, daughter, there are people that live near where they put the pickleball court and they can't even sit outside. I also have ranchers who have lived in the town and now sound it. I have been to the town of the Seven Hills, the Becker Village, the town of Little Grove, and then down to Town Bridge Recreation Facility. There are playgrounds, pools, tennis courts, and you know. So there is something I said because of the noise. It's a, it's a work noise, you know, but it's, but things are having a way. What if I'm going to have a way, I could study it. I don't want, I don't know what's better. I don't want to do it, I have a lot of fun.
The sound, I think it was submitted, but I don't know if people know what was submitted.
This isn't the hearing.
This is the hearing.
He's ended a survey and I would think that we want the committee to know what that was so that they know that the sound isn't in eighty decibels.
I don't think people know fifty decibels and you can hear in the, you can read it, and it makes sense, but, you know.
Right?
All of our regulations have, have a fifty decibel minimum or maximum at the property line. That's why we have noise generating equipment regulations, so it's, it's considered. And, um, so, so even if it was fifty, fifty decibels at, um, Mr. Sandel's property line, it would still meet our regulations and his house would play above that, so, and further away from that. A lot of people have, a lot of people have it, are not exactly on the road. Fifty decibels isn't that.
That was the aim, that they were aiming for, no more than fifty decibels. The report is available in the Randy's office for anybody who's interested in reading those.
So the agenda is tonight's meeting.
Oh, the whole report?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And that's one, one, I'm sorry, I didn't want to get into this, so, I, I, first, the sound study, I just wanted to kind of refocus things. And I, and I, I do think, having done the research also for the Washington club, I think we'd be surprised at how little sound's going to be heard in some of these businesses.
Well, and...
But I think everyone has a chance to speak, but it doesn't...
And how it works, really, I mean, you've got your expert who submitted a, a sound report. We will have a site-specific sound report. We commissioners get to read, uh, both and consider them both and make a judgment ourselves. We, we won't say, oh, yours is null and void. I suggest it'll be a judgment call.
I was just going to say, is there another side?
Yeah. Okay, so, um, Mr. Sandos is going to address Mitchell's question about, um, accessory use. Uh, also, a site-specific response to the, uh, acoustics report that the town submitted. And the town will submit a revised site plan. And for those reasons, and I have a motion to continue the hearing too.
Yeah.
Can we, because what's going to happen in the real world to, to... Do we have the ability to have a site? What are we doing?
We, we do now.
We have the ability, we have the ability to somehow, really, to, to... And actually try to set up a pickleball game with the ball to improve our sound, you want to do that?
We could, I mean, is it...
The tennis courts may be different, but...
Well, I suggested that the boys and no pickleball, if they go, even though it's not graded properly. But just go out on a Saturday afternoon from three to four and hit the ball, and hit the ball, and, and, no, just to see what it sounds like. So we can see from over eight and run away, just if, to tell them so. Athletic and active, you won't break your neck or anything, it's not graded, right? If it's on the ground.
Yeah, just at a time. I'm not, I'm thirty-nine years old.
I'm not going to figure it out. It's not like you don't know the expectancy, just to see if it's...
Yeah, how we kind of...
Okay, okay.
When you read the report by the town, I think, it was done with a computer model, it wasn't one of the, what's, what sound source, where those flags are, and then what's measured with the sound. That's an approach, I think, some of you were discussing that.
But I, but I, but I think, I think that would be, I would say, I think it would probably, uh, it would probably...
If you get to report in a, in a fashion that you could take a look at it possibly, I don't know whether you have to go and schedule it. Schedule this, I don't know if you do this, but you don't need to, you need to first...
We can have a site inspection, um, as long as the public hearing is still open.
How do you, and so if you had a site inspection going to someone's home, for example, one of the homes on the, the, and seeing if, sort of picking up on...
Okay, so we have, we would have to schedule it as a, as a special meeting.
Yeah.
So we would have to know ahead of time. No surprise, I think, but, um, because we have to, um, we have to have a, um, notice within twenty-four hours before, before twenty-four hours. Uh, and, um, I guess it's just a matter of coordination, like, or what, the day and the time and, uh...
And where each one's going to be, which house, all the...
Well, that's what I was going to say, to go to one house.
Yeah, we know, we all have you. So this is, obviously because of the logistics, there will be no talking. I'm catching you. So you just go, you take your notes, right, like five, eight, two.
And that's done.
Now, what, and are you suggesting that on the tennis courts, they play pickleball for an hour?
No, I, I think they can be in the sun where the guy, just on the ground.
Noise is not falling on the ground, noise is the ball.
Oh. Oh.
More loud.
Oh, that's how much I know.
Yeah, so you do a grass, you do it, yeah. If that's what the government...
So do we have to, uh, say that we're going to meet at certain houses? Or can we just drive around the area and get out of the car every once in a while and listen?
I guess.
Well, except if you go, it's pretty hard to, then they'll be playing like an hour.
Oh.
I mean...
Well, so maybe have a, have a time, uh, between this and that time, maybe, uh, ten, twenty minutes.
He's one of the computer models.
We all have different hearing.
Yeah.
And would somebody else might consider loud, it's going to be something that what I consider loud. And that's the point of the sound.
Now, but you, I don't, it's hard to argue against listening to, well, some pure model with the, because that's the point.
Well, I mean, you have experts who present, that if you believe it or not, evidently they believe it enough that they're going to switch out to...
How are you able to make a determination based on experts that experts will say anything on both sides? Yeah. Here you leave it, I don't care.
Gene Kenny?
Maybe, yeah, to go to Brookfield in your actual, in an actual setting, to get the idea of what the sound is, if you needed to know that. But I think driving around the setting of an artificial, it's not scientific.
I, I, I just, I just don't know how you, okay, this is my, I don't know how you can better than try to replicate the situation, the scenario, where you're unhappy about the sound and we're trying to understand you're unhappy. Then actually go to your house, standing there while Michael plays pickleball back and forth and listening to the sound. There's, there's nothing better, studies, no.
Not an actual...
Attorneys here, so it'll come. So he can yell.
I, I don't know. No, I'm just saying, there aren't actual reports that are in Brookfield.
But maybe, and also, it also is determined by the, the photography.
Roads and roadways, you have to be studying it.
But it's so subjective. You have a scientific study and, and I think, you know, what might be allowed for me, the dosage, is going to be sought for someone else. I don't see this accomplishing anything, and if you want to hear the sound, go online. There are quite a few different sources there of different locations, different times, and you can finish your scientific study with that. But driving around, I mean, what if Michael decides to really smack this ball around a lot just to make it louder? It's, it's just too subjective and unnecessary.
But it's not going to have, you can have the sound, but it's not going to...
The one that was commissioned, as their evidence, they're going to move their court based on that.
Okay, and attorney's house is going to come up. Okay, so, well, that's not fair. Attorney's house is going to come out, I'm going to assume this is going to be a problem, because otherwise he wouldn't submit it, right? And, and now, how do you wait it?
We will be, it's fair, it's judgment.
What does that mean? How are you able, you're judging, not an expert.
It's better than me standing in the field and saying, "Oh, my ears hurt."
No, not in a field. One is deliberate, two is, yeah, school street, and then it's over. It's just do it for thirty minutes and then we...
But it's not so intuitive and it's not...
It is, it is, it is, it is...
I, I never took physics, so I can't really talk about the physics, but it's deep. And, uh, you know, the regulations use the number, numbers to be presented and, uh, to evaluate. Our, our point will be that the law, when you can start hearing, is over it now.
Okay, but, let me take, if, if we do this, then they might say, "Oh, my gosh, we didn't hear a thing, let's let it go." I mean, they could spend the money, they could be very happy. And it doesn't cost any money to have the Boris hit the ball for thirty minutes. And we go to their house and they say, "My gosh, we don't know anything's happening," and it's...
You should look at both studies and if there's any literary questions and someone has bad following. It's too subjective and we can't deny or prove based on, you know, a subjective experience when we have science.
Because of the fact it's not going to be based only on the numbers. The numbers are close. We're also, we're also looking at other standards with special terms. So we're, it's not just a consideration of the decibel level.
Agreed, agreed, yeah. So, so, so let's take the subjective out.
But rather than talking about it, let's just do it and get it over with. I mean, and...
We're, we're working on it.
You might be blissfully happy that it may or not...
Jen?
On behalf of the town of Washington, I don't know how a lot of people would feel, that, that the commission has requested a sound survey and the town paid four thousand dollars for it, and this would be interesting. And then you said, would it just be better if we actually let them hit the ball back and forth? So I'm just going to say, for, for the sake of the money that the taxpayers are, are spending for the requested survey, it should absolutely be considered when you're making this.
I don't think the people that live there know what fifty decibels is, and I'm thinking just be better.
Which is why it's your responsibility as the commission to make this. So that is your job.
You can look up, uh, you can look up comparisons, somebody will say, if you look up fifty decibels, they'll say, uh, the sound of the discussion. The sound of a, 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 you know, a, a regular conversation. My classroom was...
I think that's what it did say.
And, yes, this is on...
Swominster.
In conjunction. One question. Is there anything stopping people from going down to the tennis courts, putting up little lines? Because there's, we're, we're even buying them, and we play pickleball on the tennis courts. Is there anything against that right now?
No, no, no.
I would suggest you get on that.
Our pickleball community can go down and start playing pickleball on the tennis courts.
The skirts are there. Hey, Mitch.
Now, 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 why is she...
Hey.
Are you respectful to me?
Of the eight men that were there for, for water. And he said, "Why is it raining twenty minutes? Why should we take these girls to the police to find anything and go to pickleball? It's always this... It's not true that they're traveling, but...
Well, let me just say that while we don't have any rule against playing pickleball on the existing tennis courts, that if someone should, at, you know, seven o'clock in the morning, hear it, um, that you're not supposed to create a nuisance beyond the property line. So if a noise nuisance is created beyond the property line, I, I don't know. I, I'm just saying, there could be complaints. But, yeah, I, yeah.
So then that study that he's going to have down the avenue, it will see where the pickleball is going to be and with that rotation. I mean, obviously that rotation makes a difference, as you suggested. So that, that night study is going to be exact.
His expert may or may not agree with the rotation, we'll have to wait and see.
Sure, I will, I will ask him to consider that on his part, whether it matters, but, I don't think...
Sir?
That's not why we're doing it, we just did it so that it would be easier.
That's actually not true, there's a quote from David Martin that says, you park through the school and you move the court and it lays two things. One, there could be a lowland water issue to do, you know, for, for the next delivery. And the second thing is basically eliminate the school and move the court. It's a quote from Dr..
Yes.
I, I think that it's truly.
A straw man would say that to listen to pickleball in the town in twelve hours, he would go crazy. I think we'd go crazy for ten or twelve hours, you know, if people were talking right outside our house, okay? Or they were singing, we don't have any zoning about that. And I've never seen, I mean, I, in, in any of the places that I've played pickleball, I have never seen that the, the courts be full for, for eight or ten hours. Okay, I've never, I've never even gone to death on him and not be able to get a court without observing it. Or go to Brookville and be able to get on a court without observing it. So it's not like we are gonna have floors of people coming to play pickleball at seven o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock in the morning. So that is a complete straw man. Second issue, which is the issue I brought up before. I live on Old Richfield Road. As you know, they put up, uh, speeding. New problem.
Yeah.
Power, right in front of my door, okay? It's right in front of my driveway. When you get out of my driveway, if I'm going to do left, okay? I have to speed up just to get over the line. And the speed camera is like right in front of me. So every time I leave my driveway, I have to remind myself to slow down. Maybe get hit by a car coming the other way because I'm gonna speed up right into the speed camera. Which the way they didn't put next to the tree or someplace where you can see it, they put it right in front of my neighbor's view from his house. And she had no say over it. We had no say over the fact that we pull out of my driveway and that's where the camera is. But wait a second, let me just say. It's important that people don't speed on Old Richfield Road. There are kids who live on Old Richfield Road. People come out of their driveways and they get hit very easily. I'm willing to put a pin up in my car, take it easy getting out of the driveway because you don't want to get a tick. Because that's for the greater good. That's for the town of Washington. That's so we don't have speeding accidents. That's so that people don't get hurt. That's a sacrifice I have to make for the community. And I think that that should be something that we consider, okay? That an individual may not particularly like the sound of something, or you might not like having a speed camera right in front of your driveway. Or a little community. And if this is something that's good for the community, tell it to them.
Um, I'd just like to say in response to something that Jen, that you said, um, I don't think it's the commission's responsibility to explain the acoustics report, that's your, that's your report and that's your responsibility.
And then my understanding is that you're requesting it, right? And then you have a hearing, I would think that it would be the responsibility of the commission to explain at least the gist of it.
But it's not part of your application, which you're presenting and you're applying for.
So then can I just read something that I.
Yes, you may, yeah.
Because if it is in fact, so we're looking at fifty decibel, that represents a moderate level of sound, generally considered safe for hearing. It's equivalent to the loudness of a quiet conversation or a quiet refrigerator or a moderate rain. Sounds in this range are often described as quiet or bad. So that is part of what the decibels are for what that, um, for the report that we've submitted.
I incorporate my reference with George Farfall, you said earlier about frequency. And. Anyway, we're getting nowhere.
Great, yeah.
Yeah.
Which machine, which way in the plane on this one?
So.
Anybody else?
Yeah, varies from high forties to low fifties around, all the way around at the houses.
All the way around, yeah.
At the houses, not at the property lines.
Oh, okay, at the different houses.
So why do you think all these people in Florida are saying, I built my greenhouse and I'm awake from seven thirty morning to ten at night?
Florida's flat and it's a totally different.
I know, but. Article act, article, article, article. We're submitting for the other thing we've considered. And y'all, Greta didn't give it to us, it was, or somebody gave it to us. And there's a lot of articles about.
It's all to protect the.
They weren't hearing the dishwasher going on.
Were you talking about the supplemental that we just got today or the, oh, Mark's funny. Okay, so. We have two people for who for sure want. Oh, if the, if the applicant requested a continuation. Yeah, I know, but I just wanna know, are we scheduling a site? Or not? Oh, let's see. I'm for. You're not.
Nope.
You are.
I am.
You're not.
I am again.
I myself don't, I. Wouldn't have to be driving around, Jen, you just position a house on the road and a house on the street, but that's the thirty minute.
Oh, I mean, like I have partial hearing loss, so I don't, I mean.
Like, should I be part of it?
Hearing loss.
Yes.
I know that there are lots of sound. I saw pickleball tournament on TV. YouTube shows all, to give you an idea of what place. Okay, one last one. Get the chair, last one.
Followed by Jim Carrey, comment a lot. Which he said, there's lots of places, watching is a lot of land. There are other places where it's not, so that would be, it's not always the plan. So why do you force him to kind of analyze it? And it's definitely something. Um, sure, there's other places where I could go by doing it. But I don't want to sit on my porch and hear none of, you know, even if it's not, um, changes the character of quality of life. And we're still getting around that and changing the profile of people. But I'm, I'm encouraged, just go back to him, say, where is this sort of property, let's talk about it. Then everybody could get what they want.
Well, that's not part of this application, we're talking about this specific application.
But you find that the problem is, well, on her own, not putting some burden on you. Perhaps that's the area we should investigate, so that there is a hiding standing here. You know, let's find another place where it's, you know. You know, I know that it's not. That would do very well.
And I just wanted to say that Jen had replied that the reason why was because there's bathrooms already down at the Riverwalk Pavilion, that there's parking down there and it's already a recreation center.
You're all right.
So that's, that's where the tennis courts are, it's a big problem.
Okay. We wrap this up, we have a motion to continue.
We continue.
I'll second.
You in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
We will have a site plan that continue the motion for the next step.
Yep.
Unlimited as soon as we get it.
Okay, so. False order, a regular meeting, um.
Hey, if you have discussions, please take them outside, we have to continue meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your input.
Love it.
Educated decisions are good decision.
Well, we've been many, many years and I'm just here. And it's a shame. Okay, what's next?
Yep.
Eight thirty-seven, um, seating, April Hill, Farrell, Solomon, Anderson. Consideration of the minutes, this was for the April meeting and I had two things, minor. One is to add Mitchell Solomon to this attendance. And the other thing is on page two, under the community table, the first paragraph. I think it said to increase coverage by thirty seven point five percent, but it should be to, um, increase to thirty seven, not by, two thirty seven point five percent. Anybody have anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, motion to accept this, correct it?
So moved.
Seconded.
On the favor? Aye. Um, okay, so we're passing over the town of Washington pickleball court until next time. New application, Lake War Mac Country Club, twenty-two Golf Links Road. If you looked at my report, it, um, it does say that you guys, well, you should, it, uh, scheduled to submit there and that it's up to you. But the applicant has not obtained approval from the state health department. Um, and we requested that they submit a written, because their written explanation was very, uh, summarize. But they need to address how this proposed plan meets the special permit standards of section thirteen point one C. And also they're adding a, a driveway, uh, because they made an agreement with the neighbors who had the shared driveway already. And so they, they're, they're gonna be using the existing driveway within their parking lot and whatever, look at the plan. But then they added another driveway for those residents. Um, so they need to get approval from the, the wetman process.
And then the wetlands, I assume.
No, it's outside of the, uh, it's outside of the upland review area. I looked very closely at that, if you look at the plan, I think there's like a tiny, tiny little sliver of a corner of that new driveway in there. But there's a red line that shows where the upland review area is from the lake.
Is this one?
I can't. Yeah, and I can't really tell from this what's new and what's of this thing, you know, um, is the wetman setback.
Yeah, the red line is the wetland setback. This is, um, this is existing conditions. Um, existing conditions. Okay. This is site plan for proposed. So if you look here, so here's the red, there's the hun- a hundred foot upland review area. And this is the driveway I'm talking about. And that would be an administrative approval and I'm not doing it. It's not necessary, let's just be what the town, you know, they have to go through the highway department to, I guess, uh, get that curb cut, uh, approved. But, um, I don't see that.
Is it, well, actually, isn't that a state road? Don't even have to get the state.
State, right. I think of that, I'm, I was thinking, no, it's, it's still in Washington, but yeah, it's.
I mean, I, I came in to review this and it was incomplete and it's still incomplete now. We have sixty-five days in which to set a hearing, so I think we should just, uh, wait until we have a complete application, that's my recommendation. So.
So this is for tennis courts, not pickleball. It's for, it's for additional tennis courts, a, uh, I believe, a, um, a tennis house. Uh, like a viewing pavilion and where the, yeah, it says pickleball court on the thing, but I don't know where there's. I don't know where they're putting them, doesn't show it on here unless they're gonna be marking up these new courts.
There's the tennis court.
Oh, so maybe, maybe pickleball court was a mistake on.
Basically tennis house.
I, I do have to look at the plan, I don't remember, I, I think that they have a, they have a, um, a pro shop that, uh, is up more on the green and that's gonna have bathrooms. They really shouldn't have bathrooms in this tennis house because there's bathrooms right down at the, uh, the beach. But either way, that's not really a problem, it's the health department, actually, it's the state that they have.
So we can either, uh, set a hearing for the June, June twenty-third, or we can wait and hopefully they'll have a complete application on June twenty-third and we could set the hearing for July.
Isn't there an executive, uh, summary or some kind of other thing with, I don't.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's incomplete. Thing's complete.
So I don't know. Where do you see the pickleball? The, the way the, the courts are.
Oh, so that's just a mistake.
But no, the neighbor told me that it, it, maybe they can listen to somebody else, but they said it's gonna be pickleball. Like, somebody.
But it's not on here.
It's not on here.
Yeah.
No, it's not on here, but it's on here, but a neighbor said to me the other day, I said, we got pickleball.
Where is it on here?
But that's hearsay. Because he didn't.
That's under, that's under eleven Steel Street. Uh, no, I'm sorry.
But, but if you look at this, it looks like they have delineated pickleball and regular tennis.
Same court, isn't it anyway? It's by measurement, but not by.
They might already have that.
All right, so we should move it. We're talking about not doing it until the next time.
Right, right. Okay, other business, any other business? Enforcement.
No, nothing, um, we have a, a couple complaints, uh, like jumping and people's parked cars. Um, and I'm working with, uh, the owner of the tunnel on Wilbur Road because he's had a lot of, uh, junk cars on there. And I gave him originally thirty days and he came in to talk to me and I mean, we're not, this does always seem like as long as people are willing to work with us and there's some progress. So I told him I would be checking on the site in June, um, to see, you know, because it's pretty bad, so.
How many junk cars do we tolerate?
We don't.
So.
But it's, but it's hard to en- enforce, uh, but this is severe, like if you look at Google Earth, it's bad.
I don't know, guy, I'm impressed with Hilton, like there's dilapidated old trucks that are missing tires and they're, they're offended. And I called Cory and she went by, like I never heard anything about it.
And I called Cory and she went by, like, I never heard anything about it. But I did look on the report of impeding practice on each one, so are they?
Are they, that's, are they using them for like parts?
That's different.
Yeah, but the neighbors went down on a dump.
Well, have the neighbors complained?
Yeah, they've complained.
They have.
Maybe they talked to the predecessor or.
Jenna? Jenna was my predecessor.
No.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann.
She talked some.
New Preston Hill up on the right, it's like one thirty. Four.
I'll have to look. Okay, but, okay, but you have to, to see it. You have to go past it. Make it turn in the driveway and come back and look at it on the left. You don't see it because the hill goes up. You don't see it. Except the neighbor's house puts right down on it. They're, they're.
They're paying. I mean, you can't trust us either. Yeah. We can't just go onto somebody's property. I mean, we get a call, we can't just go onto somebody's property because we got a call from a neighbor saying, are these neighbors? It's seen from the road. Right.
It is seen from the road. It's just better seen coming downhill, looking up than coming uphill, looking up. If you're coming down, you look and you just see truck, 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 car, sedan, and they're all upended and turned around and lopsided and they're rusted out. And it's an answer to me, but the neighbors and their company, they drive on the porch and in the summer they look right down, or the winter they look right down at the dump. But anyway, I looked and got like thirteen cars and they're all fifty, sixty, seventy meters tall between their, their trucks and whatever, and he's paying five dollars and ninety cents a year, factors on it, whatever. They're all old and dilapidated and rusted out. Windows open.
Yeah.
It's horrible, I mean, but anyway.
Where do you go?
Whatever.
Anything else for enforcement? In voices of communications?
No, we're, I mean, I sent through the budget, um, update, we're, we're all good.
Roads which are the floor? Okay, administrative. I always forget. Um, administrative business, not to decide tonight, but I'm just bringing it up. Dave Workhoven was our vice chair, so we need to elect another vice chair. And so think about it and hopefully we could put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
I just want to also point out that, uh, none of these, especially since these pickleball courts are being, are, you know, first of all, they're three, they're coming under three different sections and they're highly visible and, and contentious. We don't stop them outside of this. Because it'll come back and bite the commission in the butt if they get taken. So. So that's in this room.
Okay, so executive session. Sorry. This is going to be, this is going to be short. No, she's closing the door.
Look, look, Randy, you.